It is six o'clock and I call to order the March 18th meeting of the Concord Select Board. All of the members of the board are present in person and we have a quorum. Before we start the regular business of the meeting, the town manager has statements to read with regard to some recent incidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I will try.
Shannon, you want me to hold?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present an additional statement on the recent Zoom bombing incidences. Last Friday, I issued a statement on the Zoom bombing incident occurring during the Finance Committee meeting on March 14, 2024. The same statement was reissued today through news and notices to reach a broader audience. Since the event, staff in various departments have been involved in developing a further response. I would like to take this opportunity to clarify what happened and to share information on additional steps we will take to prevent future occurrences. Again, on Thursday evening, March 14, 2024, the Finance Committee met in regular session beginning at 7:00 PM in a hybrid format, meaning that committee members and the public could participate either in person or through remote access on the Zoom platform. At approximately 8:52 PM, a member of the public shared their screen showing a graphic containing anti-Semitic images and other vulgar images and language. At this time, several persons in the remote audience engaged in a dialogue of anti-Semitic rhetoric and other vile comments. The screen sharing and dialogue ensued from that point until 9:04 PM. During this time, staff worked to identify and expel those Zoom users making anti-Semitic comments. I recognize that our response was slow and the time needed to restore order was too long, resulting in harm to committee members, members of the public, and staff in attendance. And for this reason, I offer my deepest apologies to all who bore witness to this unconscionable and disgusting display. This incident was immediately referred to the Concord Police Department, who in turn has opened an investigation and is actively working with the state police and the Commonwealth Fusion Center and the FBI. Additional information will be provided once it is available. Staff have reported this matter to Zoom for further investigation with the hopes of identifying and banning these users from future meetings. Staff are also conducting a review of terms of service for both Zoom and YouTube to ensure user compliance. I will note that while we have received requests for a copy of the video from last week's meeting from multiple persons, until such time as our review is complete, both Town Council and law enforcement, until it has been completed and both Town Council and law enforcement have authorized its release, copies of the recording will not be made available. This week, as with most weeks, we have multiple public meetings scheduled, including two public hearings in advance of our annual town meeting. Our technology team is currently engaging in additional outreach to Zoom meeting hosts to confirm that all are using the latest release of Zoom software, which allows for enhanced security protocols. Our technology team is also finalizing a one-page leaflet, which provides step-by-step instructions on how to quickly and efficiently shut down a Zoom bombing event. In addition to wide distribution of this material, we will post this information in each of our municipal meeting rooms with specific room information instructions, which are necessary as different protocols are required, depending upon the meeting format, the specific equipment being used, and whether the meeting is being livestreamed. Further, given the timing of the upcoming Finance Committee public hearings, we have moved those meetings over to the Zoom webinar format. While we have yet to decide whether we will use this platform on a regular basis, it feels like the prudent course of action, at least for this week, while we continue our user outreach and gain a better understanding of what more we can do to be better prepared. Moving forward, we have committed to conducting a post-incident analysis, following the pattern established within our broadband enterprise for reviewing outages, the results of which will be made available to the public. Concord has a long and distinguished history of civic engagement, which respects our First Amendment rights, avoids ad hominem attacks, and seeks to work as a group to advance the best interests of our community. We will continue to honor those values in our own practice of civic engagement, while at the same time remaining vigilant against the actions of those who seek to cause harm to our friends, neighbors, and colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these brief remarks at the meeting this evening.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our public comment period. Are there any members of the public here who are on Zoom who wish to make public comments on issues that will not be in front of the board for discussion tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Are there any items that members would like to remove from the consent agenda before we move?
I would.
Which one?
I'd like to pull off for discussion the runway for recovery for wines only for liquor license.
Linda, do you have a microphone?
It says it's on.
Can you say that again? Didn't hear you.
I'd like to pull off the item runway for recovery for wines only for the liquor license.
Anything else? Okay, move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of F3.
Second.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Actually, we can just show our hands. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Are we going to talk about that item?
We are.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you very much. It sounds like it can be a wonderful activity. I just have a couple of questions for clarity and then a comment to make. In the application itself, it says the type of event is a municipal facility, and then later on, it describes the event of closing down part of the Walden Street, if I recall, from Main Street to Hubbard. And so I just want some clarification on that. And then the second item, I was seeking some clarification for whether or not that, as I recall, it's a Thursday evening, and I think in the, we usually have extended hours for our retail on Thursday evening, and I want to make sure that, I want to clarify that that's in effect right now, and whether or not, you know, it could be helpful to the, to the retail shops that are open, but it also could be somewhat disruptive. So I want some clarification about that, and then I'll make another comment.
Well, is there anybody here who has any clarification?
Yeah, I can answer one technicality part for the application where it says the event type is event in town-owned facility. We only give three options on what type of event it is, and that was the most fitting for this event, but it is going to be closing down the street. We also do have runway for recovery on Zoom, so.
I don't know if anyone's able to comment on the retail.
Runway.
Can we, this is somebody from the event who wants to answer the questions. Want her to proceed?
Sure. Thank you so much. My name's Olivia Boger. I'm the founder and executive director. The event that we held for the last three years shut down Walden Street, as I explained in the application, and when we've done it, the stores were all invited to stay open and be part of the fundraising effort. They had not had a stay open late Thursday at that time, the last few times we've had the event, but maybe that's changed for the town of Concord, in which case I'm happy to adjust the hours based on when they would be, you know, offering to stay open later.
Okay.
And then if you could just speak to the, it's somewhat unusual that you're located out of Concord, correct?
We were founded in Concord. Yes, that's where I grew up.
Founded in Concord, but your office is outside of Concord, correct?
Our office is now in Newburyport, yes.
Yes, okay. So you're, as a resident of Concord, you're the connection to this event?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or any more information? Are we ready to?
Speaking among ourselves, I would just say that I'm sure this is a good event and a good cause, so that's not the issue. I am concerned about this opening up the floodgate for, you know, how many times we can entertain very worthy groups by shutting down, you know, municipal space.
Do we have a policy on this? I mean, if we're going to have, if we're going to make judgments about running events, closing streets and so on, and are we able to do it on a case-by-case basis, or should this be something we should look at as having a policy?
So my understanding is that staff departments have vetted this and, you know, and I'm comfortable with that, but, you know, I do want to raise this as an issue for the future.
All right.
Thank you.
Are we ready then to vote on this as a separate item off the consent agenda?
I guess building on Linda's question, though, do, has there been notice going out to the businesses that are potentially affected so that they understand that this would be their opportunity to raise an objection if they had one?
Can we answer that question from the corner of the screen up?
There hasn't been a direct outreach to retailers or businesses in that area to let them know that, no.
We had, well, from runway there has. We had somebody go by foot into every store last week.
Oh, thank you.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, so there is.
So, all right, maybe if we're looking at this as a policy or procedure in the future, we might want to add some kind of opportunity to make sure that those that are directly affected by such an application hear about it.
That may be like a special permit, as it were.
And we have some evidence of that, yeah.
Something along those lines.
Okay, well.
And also that the Economic Vitality Director weigh in, you know, that she be informed and inform us if there's any concerns. Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Good guy. We're ready for a motion? Great. Move to approve a one-day liquor license for runway for recovery for wines only for the Love Local Concord event on Thursday, May 16, 2024, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM on Walden Street between Main Street and Hubbard Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
What was the date you said?
May 16.
Okay, thank you. That's what I read.
I think that's what I said.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice event. All right, it is the, now the next item is Select Board liaison reports.
No, it's the town manager's report.
Have I missed?
Yes, you've missed two.
Okay, I don't want to miss that. Carrie?
Sure. Thank you and good evening. Just a couple of updates to you. I wanted to note that Concord's age-friendly business program is off to a good start. It is part of a year-long effort by the town of Concord and MAPC to boost economic vitality and expand accessibility and inclusion within Concord's business district for older customers. The program had its formal kickoff with an energetic gathering at the Senior Center on February 15. There were about two dozen community members in attendance. After reviewing the work plan and the goals, the group refined a survey, and that survey is available online, and we would encourage any of our residents aged 60 or older to participate in that survey. The town clerk wanted to issue a reminder that the grace period for dog licenses ends on Sunday, March 31st. Also, a reminder that town election is April 9, 2024. Ballots will be mailed as soon as they are received to anybody who has applied for, for that type of voting. If you have any questions about voting by mail or early voting, please contact the town clerk's office. Just a couple of other notes. From our Recreation Department, summer camp registration is underway. We've had a very strong interest in enrollment to date. A couple of other recreation events coming your way, an egg hunt at Emerson Track on March 29 at 5:00 PM. They have a, the Kite Fest at Ride Out Park scheduled for May 4, and the summer concert series beginning in July, going through August on Thursday evenings. And those were the, the updates I wanted to provide to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. As for the chair's report, you may have been aware that the, the oral argument on the Estabrook case appeal took place on March 1, and I asked Town Council to give me a report on how that went, and I will read, read what he has sent to me. He said he was not able to attend, but the team reported it went very well, as did retired Judge Doug Wilkins and our retired litigation partner, Scott Lewis, who has argued countless appellate cases. Both, both of them, along with retired Superior Court Judge Sanders, helped with preparation of the moot on their own time. All agree that Judge Englander general appeared to be siding with the town and that the other two judges asked good questions but were harder to read. Here is Judge Wilkins' summary, which I think sums up well and makes a cautiously optimistic estimate of the result. Although I often have doubted whether oral argument accomplishes much, in this instance, there was a clear lightbulb moment when one, one judge said basically, now I get it. After Austin, who was our head counsel on this, succinctly said that all Concord needs to prove was that the public way had an excess easement before the discontinuance and still has one now. So we have an optimistic report on that appellate argument, and my guess is it will be many months before we see a decision on that. Now we can, the next item on the agenda is the Select Board liaison reports. Linda, do you have anything? You usually do.
Sure, okay. Let's see here. The ZBA has been working away, as has the Planning Board. The Planning Board heard the special permit and site plan review for CHCD's Assabett River Bluff Project, and the, there was a favorable review of that, and they're in the process of drafting the decision that will be sent to ZBA with the conditions, usual conditions and additional conditions that were discussed. The Concord Municipal Housing Trust has met again, and I'll just highlight one or two things in particular, and that is that they have invited the Novo 40B project to apply for sewer, sewer assistance fund. That's not the word I'm looking for, but. Improvement fund, thank you very much. And, and so as soon as the proponents submit their application, that will be reviewed hopefully on the 26th of March, if it's received by then, before the next ZBA meeting. Let's see. CHA met, and they have now approved their annual plan. They held a public hearing for their annual plan for state public housing, which are required to do. They've now approved it and sent it to the state for their approval. The, the CHA is getting a fair amount of attention for the success of their Habitat, working with Habitat for the unit that was developed on the Giraud property, and they've been asked to speak not only at the Habitat celebration, but also at an upcoming conference for CHA. Let's see. The Commission on Disability met, and they've had a number of concerns during the year regarding various potential problems that individuals in town have to encounter in terms of navigating either the railroad tracks or the roads or some other items, and a couple times it was a very precarious situation, and luckily there were some citizens in the area to address that. So they've now decided, and appropriately so, that to step back and to look at the town's transition plan for self-evaluation and transition plan that's required by the federal government. The last one that Concord did, I believe, was in 2010, and they set some priorities in that plan and have in fact addressed those priorities. A number of our neighboring communities, however, have recently updated their transition plans, and there have been some state funding available to help them in that process because you have to engage consultants usually to do that. So at this last meeting, they shared a number of town sites, computer websites, where for the neighboring towns that, who have tackled this recently, and the homework for the commission is to study this myriad amount of material prior to their next meeting. And I think it's just to familiarize committee members with what's included in those kinds of plans and what the possibilities are and, you know, what they might want to bring forward to staff or some, some other people. So that was, the other meeting I attended was the Council on Aging, and the Assistant Town Manager and Human Resource Director indicated that an offer was being made sometime this last week to a potential new director for COA, so we, we're waiting to hear that announcement, I guess is what I would say. We've already heard more than we care to hear about the most recent Finance Committee meeting. I was in attendance at that meeting. And I'll just note that one of the first items on the agenda was a presentation by the Minuteman Regional School District and their budget, and in preparation for the Warren article that will be presented at annual town meeting. And the, the committee did ask for some additional information, but in, in general, it was a well-received report. I will say that in the process of that discussion, it became apparent that they're, they're in the process of offering a contract to a new superintendent, and the superintendent that we met last year is no, no longer there, so there's another announcement that we're looking forward to hearing. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Can I, I'd like to ask you one question, and that is?
Sure.
You referred to the, the work done through Habitat for Humanity, and you're talking about the house that was built on Commonwealth Avenue, right?
Right.
And I know our original discussion about that long ago was recognition of the extremely high cost of building that house. Can you, do you have any idea what, what the cost was by doing the work through Habitat for Humanity?
It was a lot less. There, and there's a land lease. It's an unusual arrangement, somewhat unusual arrangement with Habitat, at least based on how we've operated in the past. I think CHA has retained the land lease because it was land that the town bought, right? But the ownership of the unit is Habitat, and they did the construction, and the ownership, because it's ownership, the tenant will own the property per Habitat, so.
So this is a home ownership program?
Right, right, and still, still at 80%.
There's a land, land lease?
Yes, yeah.
So, be interesting, though, to know what, how, what the savings were on that.
Yeah.
We can find out.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Mary, do you have something?
I do. I'll begin with CMLP. CMLP has, as you know, a new interim director who publishes a weekly or periodic update, which is a refreshing thing to have so much transparency and communication coming from the CMLP. I will just highlight a few of the things that he talked about during the meeting. The first is, is that Concord has surpassed 1,000 EVs in our town, which is, we're second behind Lexington, but we're catching up. The other thing he talked about was that the rollout of the smart meters, which are going to use Wi-Fi to collect data, is about 30, we're about 30% in to the full rollout of that. That's, we've been planning for that for a long time, so we're making some progress. Rain impedes the rollout, so not much we can do about that. We've got two high-speed chargers at Ride Out Park, which are, the vendor is a company called Flow, and we're having a little issues with whether we can in fact attach a surcharge to one of those chargers, and we're working that out with the vendor. He talked about MCI, specifically both short and long-term implications of the movement of the MCI facility. In the short term, we have to remember that MCI was a huge customer of CMLP. I think they, they paid about $800,000 a year in, in electric. So in the short term, that's going to require a rate adjustment that the board will think about at their subsequent meetings. In the long term, as that property is redeveloped, there's going to be a change in the usage of electricity, because the prison was pretty level usage, and now when, as it goes to whether it's residential or whether it's retail or commercial, there will be peaks and valleys, so that's going to impact the load on the grid. So there's, they're thinking about both the short-term implication to our short-term rates, and they're also thinking about the long-term implications as far as the, the load of the grid, yes.
On that, do we have the ability to sell the excess capacity of our municipal light plant? I assume that we have been providing power to the, to MCI, and now we have excess, excess either transmission or generation capacity?
No.
We have none?
We don't have either transmission or generation capacity.
So we're just losing revenue?
Well, no, we, we're a power reseller, so we buy the power that we sell, except for what's generated by the solar. Sorry, Mary, I didn't.
That's, no, that's fine. Go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
So I don't understand why we might need a rate adjustment then.
So I don't understand why we might need a rate adjustment then. We're losing revenue.
I think we have contracts that we have to.
Well, there's a certain amount of fixed costs.
Fixed costs, okay.
That are associated with a bill that large. So it's a relatively small portion of the CMLP budget that goes towards that, so I could see some adjustment. It's an interesting supposition. I would be willing to guess, though, that the residents of the, of MCI Concord use proportionally less energy, less electricity than a typical Concord resident actually does. So in the long-term redevelopment, I doubt that this is a loser. But in the short run, obviously, it's, it's a very abrupt change in usage by a major customer.
I didn't get that impression. I got the impression that the load from the prison was high because of lighting and security, but I, I'm not an expert in this and you could, you could be right.
I'd do some math on that, but it's an interesting question.
They're working on it.
And one more question about that. You said there was a new interim director?
Yeah, Jason Belger.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Jason. And then finally, for, I'll get off on this topic for a minute. There was an affordable connectivity program that helped people with broadband connections, people who couldn't afford, to pay for their broadband connection and that's being discontinued. It was a federal program and that's being discontinued. So the, the board will think of using the residential rate program, which is what we use for people who can, aren't able to afford their electric bill. We'll use that program to help them with their broadband. And there's even more in this report if you're interested. Moving on, I also attended something called an MMA seminar. For those of you who don't know, MMA stands for the Mass Municipal Association. It's like a trade group for municipal staff and elected officials. And they had a webinar on incentives for property tax relief, the different types of incentives. And I think it's important for us to remember that we only tax based on what the state allows us to do. So we don't decide how we would like to set property taxes. We're, we can only adopt what's already been prescribed by state statutes. So this was a review of what's possible with state statutes. And the interesting thing that I found out was that there is a program now under the Housing Bond Bill, I think, to help renters. So there is a possibility for us to help renters who, that are living in affordable housing and it's up to the Select Board to determine what the level of rent is. The AMI would be up to 200%. The tax relief goes to the owner of the property, not the actual renter. So there's some, there's some things we need to work out. But I know that some of the people in the housing group are interested in that. So I just wanted to let them know that that's, that's available and we can research that more. Finally, the Planning Board had their hearing last week. They talked, they had their hearing for all four of their Warren articles. The first article, of course, is the MBTA Communities Act. There wasn't a lot of questions, I think, for the most part. The, I think that they've done such a good job with the outreach in the community and preempted a lot of questions that this was actually a very quiet hearing. So I think that, that bodes well. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Teri?
Yes, I was at that hearing and I thought the Chair, Lynda Miller, did a really exceptionally good job on presenting. So there weren't, she answered the questions already in her presentation. And Lynda, thank you for reminding me. I was at the Habitat key ceremony. Mary was there and Kerry was there. And one thing they mentioned, it was a great community event and they mentioned the possibility of working with Habitat again in the near future, possibly with the Asbit River Bluff Project. So that would be good. Save, saving money for everyone again.
Well, didn't Habitat also do that house on Main Street?
They did.
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, they did.
Right. So.
Good partner.
The Hanscom Environmental Impact Report is out and there's a very small comment, period again. And I would really like to see it on our agenda so that we, as a Select Board, can comment because it's time, we commented before the Environmental Impact Report and now that the responses are out from the proponent, I think we're going to need to comment again. I haven't read it yet, but I'm guessing we're going to want to comment again. So I'd really like to see that. Last time the comment period was only 30 days, which I think it is again. So as soon as possible. And another thing that I'd really like to have on our agenda, we've been having talks about MCI and it's bringing up the need in town for a strategic plan. And I, I think the Select Board should really discuss, should we do a strategic plan? Should we go back to envision Concord and we're halfway there now? Should we take a look at that and see what we've accomplished? What's our next step? I'd really like to see that kind of overall discussion on our agenda.
Yeah, I think that would, that would probably be a good thing to do after town meeting because we have a lot on our plate between now and then. But as far as the response to the environmental study, do you know what the deadline is?
I can find out, but if, I saw Lynda nodding, 30 days would be.
30 days, yeah.
Starting the 22nd, I think.
I think it's already come out on the 15th.
Yeah, the 15th was the day they submitted it to.
Right.
MEPA and then I think they were going to post it for public comments.
Right, so it's either 30 days after March 15th or 30 days after March 22nd.
What do you envision as our response? What, what are we going to say?
Well, I haven't read it yet, so.
Well, we would need, we would need to know, we'd need help as far as understanding what it says and what's the scope of our response.
Right. So last time we sent in a comment. And so it's hard to say, well, I'm sorry I haven't read it yet, but I think we're all going to have to get up to speed on it. And since we've put in an official comment twice before, I think we should, even if we just repeat what we said before, we need to be on record that we're still paying attention and, you know, if we have any objections or whatever. And we also have legal counsel that we've hired to help us with this.
Yeah, it looks like a public comment goes through May 10th, according to the.
Wasn't the legal counsel just for records requests?
So it wasn't, it wasn't reviewing the environmental impact study?
Yeah, so I think if we don't comment, it looks like.
I'm okay with commenting. I just want it to be a substantive comment.
Absolutely.
Not just a rehash of what we've already said. So we need help.
Can we distribute, distribute a copy of it?
I don't, I don't know how, I'm not an environment.
I will find, I will find it and send it, the link to Shannon. And I just want to make sure we get it on the agenda in time to comment before the deadline.
I started looking at it.
Oh, good.
It's nothing that they haven't been already saying in the public meetings, at least is, you know, through the first 30 pages that I got.
Well, the reason I think this is important is that it's important because I think the environmental review is probably the most promising approach to having an effect on the final outcome because all the other avenues are really not avail, really available to us like the FAA and, and the political, the political agenda is unclear at this point. So I think that the environmental review is how, is how we have to go at it if we really care. But then there is a substantial cost involved in, I think, in challenging the environmental review process. And we have to decide whether we want to bear that cost or find somebody else who might, might be able to do that.
Has anybody contacted Conservation Law Foundation?
I think that Chris was going to do that, wasn't he?
Yes, we did, I did ask Chris Carmody to reach out to that group to see if they were interested. I haven't heard anything back. I would just say if you would like to talk about this at a meeting, I think it needs to be on an agenda.
That's all I'm saying. Let's put it on our agenda. We have a lot to discuss here. Okay, good.
Yes, thank you.
And I was just pointing out that it looks like we have until early May to get that done.
Right, but town meeting is, I think we should start before town meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Okay, anything else, Teri?
No.
Mark?
So the Personnel Board is moving ahead to incorporate the administrative elements that are planned to be removed from the Personnel Bylaw by Article 6 of Annual Town Meeting into a new policy, Personnel Policy and Procedure Number 43, which will go into effect immediately upon adoption of the new bylaw by town meeting. And that's a transitional step to ensure the current administrative conditions remain in effect for the affected employees while the HR Director develops the employee handbook that they've been working towards. And the handbook is intended to be a one-stop for employment policies. Employee communications are taking place and there are, several supervisors and employees have attended recent Personnel Board meetings. So it's a really encouraging dialogue with the Personnel Board, engaged in, in that strategic work and taking forward what we expect to result from town meeting. I also attended the MBTA Advisory Board meeting. They've done some routine things like getting audited and have a budget, which is good. But I thought I would mention that at the next session on April 9th, it'll be the one-year anniversary with Philip Eng at the head of the, of the MBTA and there's an opportunity to ask questions. So if anybody has a question that they're looking to pose to the head of the MBTA, just let me know and I'll try to get it into that, into that question queue. That meeting again is April 9th.
April 9th, on Zoom too?
Yeah.
And what, what time?
It's the MBTA Advisory Board. It's usually 10:00 in the morning.
Thanks.
Okay. The Climate Action Committee has successfully completed Part 1 of the Green Home Tours on March 9th and that was well-attended. And there's another set of those coming up this Saturday, March 23rd. And they've submitted an article seeking our support for Article 31, which I believe we're going to discuss later. The DEI Commission is scheduling workshop training for boards and committees. That's been, went out with the announcement. I noticed at the Chair's breakfast, it's open to all members of all boards and committees. It's a three-part workshop. It's going to take place on consecutive Fridays, starting March 29th, April 5th and the 12th. So please look, look to your committee chairperson for that registration for that committee. The Warner's Pond Task Force was expecting to meet tomorrow, but it's being moved to Thursday. There's been a request for conflict of interest disclosure forms to be provided by certain members of the committee. If you recall, the Task Force was constituted to include some specific interests like upstream abutter and downstream abutter. And now some, let's call it eagle-eyed folks going through their conflict of interest training have called that out as requiring disclosure through the appointing authority. So the NRC, this is a segue right into the NRC, is going to meet on Wednesday night and, and look at that. I find this a little confusing.
Mark, I think the best way to deal with this usually is to just call that state hotline. And I mean, there's two ways to look at it. I don't know what's right and wrong and just for them to.
Most, most of these issues can be dealt with through disclosure. And if they have a bunch of those, can we arrange it so we, we see them all at one time?
So we are not the appointing authority in this case. The NRC is the appointing authority. So they are going, they are planning to entertain these as a group on Wednesday night.
And so it's not the Select Board. It's the appointing authority that can do the waiver?
Right, and that's the ones who set up this system whereby there would be abutters specifically identified as abutters and recruited as such, so.
So that's a gift.
It seems like it should be fairly straightforward, just mentioning it because it's one of these places where I think, you know, sometimes we get a little too.
Well, we try to appoint people who know something about the subject.
That's right.
Those are the people who may have a conflict relating to it, so.
And just, well, just the last thing for me. The Board of Health is again publicizing a hearing on standardizing well regulations, which I've mentioned before. It would affect specifically the ability to create, to dig wells in the vicinity of places like 2229 Main Street, but also is further reaching than that and eventually we'll start to see that. But that's, that's coming up at the upcoming Board of Health meeting, which is being moved, I believe, to April 2nd from its usual time, which would have been March 29th. That's it for me.
Okay. I think that's it for liaison reports. This is, we haven't had them for a while, so it's good to catch up.
That's just since last meeting.
Yeah, just since last meeting.
Really? Was I here?
I don't know, were you?
You were physically here.
You were.
Well, I thought I'd try to come up with the bright side of it, so anyway. So the next item on the agenda is the requested amendment to the Historical Commission charge. And I think we have someone here to, yes, Anne Clifford?
Hi, yes.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Clifford and I'm the Senior Planner with the Town of Concord. I work with the Historical Commission and HTC and CPC. We're embarking on a year-long planning process, as you all know, to update the Community-Wide Historic Preservation Plan. And that will look, that will take a comprehensive look at the Administrative Code. But to get this project started, we thought it would be essential to increase the membership. And so by the state law, we're allowed to have as many associate members as we do regular members. And so that's the, that's the purpose of this change to the code. So we thought we'd just start with that first piece and then toward the end of the year or further down the road, there will be more changes. So would you like me to read it or you have the material in the packet?
You do, yes.
Go ahead.
And the substance of it is appointment to enlarge the committee.
Right, so that there would be five regular members and five associate members.
And today there are.
Five, five regular.
Five members and two associate members.
Thank you.
And the associate members vote when they're taking the place of a principal member only?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So after this project is finished, will you still have the associate members?
Yes, yes, that will be a permanent change to the code. And by, by the law, they can have up to five, but they are not required to have as many as five.
When the Historical Commission is working on a project like updating their, their charge, do all members participate equally in that activity or is it still just the five principal members?
Oh, that's a good question. We haven't crossed that bridge yet. It's not defined in the code, I don't think.
Is that something that the Commission will decide for itself?
I'm not, I guess we'll, we'll be talking about this over the course of the year and we'll have an update for you.
So I had another question, Anne.
Okay, yes.
When you talk about, I'm going to have to read it to illustrate what I'm talking about. Halfway down through the, under the membership paragraph.
Okay.
I think on about line five or six. It says, "In the case of the absence or inability to act on the part of a principal member," the, the, oh my gosh.
"The place of the principal member shall be taken by an alternate member."
Yeah. "The, the place of a principal member shall be taken by an alternate member designated by the Chair." And then after that, it says, "In the case of a vacancy occurring other than by expiration of a term, the Chair may designate an alternate member to serve as a member of the Commission until said vacancy is filled in as provided in this section." So I'm just questioning whether or not you would want to, the Chair may designate an alternate member to serve as a principal member of the Commission until said vacancy is filled. is filled as provided in this section. Just to clarify.
Sure. I think we've used the language straight out of the state law, but that would certainly clarify things, wouldn't it?
Otherwise, I thought it was good. Thank you.
I have a question. I know we have trouble sometimes finding people to appoint to committees. Do you have, first of all, do you have five active members right now?
Yes.
You do. And are you going to have any trouble finding more?
No, no problem at all. They're already lined up.
Can we get them on some other committees? Could I have some names and some phone numbers?
If you have more than five, send them over to Shannon. We'd love to have them on the other committees.
Really, wouldn't we?
All right.
That would be great.
We'll take them.
Is there any further discussion, or can we just move on to? I think this is, we've been talking about this for quite a while, in one forum and another. I think, I don't think there's really any objection to enlarging the committee, even though we do acknowledge that committees never get smaller, they only get bigger, just like budgets. Okay.
Okay, move to approve the amendment to the Concord Historical Commission code as included in the Select Board meeting packet.
Would the amendment suggested? With the addition of the word principal? I insert, I suggested inserting a word, principal?
Okay. Would the amendment suggested?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, unanimous.
Okay. All right. Now, do we move to the cable contract? Is that?
No, the public hearing.
If I missed something, I'm just going through my file here.
We're actually early for the public hearing.
Okay, we have.
We're late.
Amendment, so the continued.
Seven o'clock. It says, at least I saw here, it was seven o'clock to open the public hearing, so.
That's 6:52.
Right.
Okay, so we skip on to the.
Let's do the Comcast.
Next item.
Okay.
Back to the cable contract.
Okay, that's it. So the cable contract is, it's all been set up for us to move on to the next phase. Is somebody here to describe what we're doing?
We do have two members in the Zoom audience, Jason Bulger, our Chief Technology Officer and Interim Director of CMLP. I think he is the primary speaker, and our consultant, Sue Buskey. Jason, are you going to start? I know we're calling on you ahead of time. Hopefully, you're ready for us. Thank you.
Speak again, Jason. That was a little fuzzy.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So this should just take a couple of minutes. I've got Sue Buskey here, who is our consultant through the negotiating process with Comcast. And as you'll remember in our hearing at the last meeting, we presented some information that explains what Comcast has done to date, which is, as required by the DPU, they've submitted an offer to the town to renew the current license agreement. And in conjunction with that, we've been spending almost a year doing analysis on what the town is actually looking for. And we presented, you know, a summary of that report in your packet last time and talked about the highlights in your meeting. And so we'd be looking for two things at this point. One, a vote by the Select Board to issue a preliminary denial of the formal offer so that we may continue negotiating with Comcast. And then after that, a extension of the current agreement. The current agreement ends in April of this year. And while we do foresee finishing soon, we would like a six-month extension of the current license agreement, and Comcast has suggested that they're amenable to that. I will say that we continue to negotiate in good faith. Terry Ackerman, Sue, and myself are the primary negotiators with Comcast, and we feel like the process is moving along very well. So this is a formality that needs to happen so that we could take this action ahead of the expiration of the current contract.
Does the Board have any questions about that?
I thought the memo that you prepared was very clear, Jason. Thank you.
Yes, very good.
Can we just move to?
We can move.
Move to a vote on this?
We have two motions, actually. Move that the Select Board deny the Comcast renewal proposed dated December 15, 2023 for the reasons stated in the Statement of Reasons that is included in the Select Board meeting packet.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Second motion, move that the Select Board agree to a six-month extension of the current Comcast franchise agreement, which is to expire on April 24, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. Now, is it still not seven o'clock? And there's nothing we can do about it, is there?
We can tell jokes.
So.
We could do the economic vitality charge.
That's a good idea.
Okay, why don't we do that?
That's a good idea.
Because anything else will probably take too long.
Right.
So that is the item 11. So is Mimi here? You want to talk about that, or who's presenting this?
I was on the agenda. I was on the agenda, so I'll start, and then Mimi can help me when I get in trouble.
Okay, thank you.
We decided to refresh the charge for the Economic Vitality Committee. In fact, I think that we should really be refreshing all of the charges, but let's start with the economic.
You're volunteering to do all of them.
I will do, I've done a lot of mine. Okay, sorry. The Economic Vitality Committee charge, this was really precipitated by the fact that we have, in fact, hired an Economic Vitality Director, which we thought changed the focus of the actual committee. So if I were to just give you the elevator pitch as to what this charge is asking the committee to do, it expands their role so that they are more involved with other town departments and other town committees. And it also asks them to host a quarterly roundtable where they would be bringing in the Concord Business Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, and other relevant town departments such as the DPW, Board of Health, or other planning departments, ZBA, other departments that have something to do with how easy or how difficult it is to do business here in Concord. So those, I think, are the two things, to expand it, to include more conversations with town staff and other business committees and boards, and to host a roundtable. That's it?
I have two comments on this.
Go ahead.
If I may. One is that since the, many of the impediments are related to zoning issues and code enforcement issues, I think that there should be someone on that committee who is designated, who has real familiarity with the details, especially of zoning. Because I think one area in which I think we can make some improvements is through making changes in zoning. So I think that maybe we ought to think about changing the composition or augmenting it somewhat. The other is.
We do have a liaison. They do liaise with the Planning Board, but I see what you're saying. You're saying make it stronger.
But the Planning Board is not an advocate. The Planning Board is essentially a regulator. And so we want here, it seems to me, if you want to promote economic vitality, the emphasis should be on facilitating and advocating rather than regulating. The second issue that I'm concerned about is that people who are regulated by town boards and agencies frequently are reluctant to bring forth their concerns, or what you might call complaints, because there is a natural kind of fear of retaliation. And because many of the, many of the regulations are pretty much, you know, like Board of Health regulations and things of that kind, are ones where there really is no effective appeal from a decision of the enforcement agency. So I think that if you want to promote the economic vitality, you need to have a forum in which people essentially are free to bring forth their complaint, their concerns without fear of getting into trouble. So that's just my thought on it.
Well, the Economic Vitality Committee is a town committee, so it's subject to open meeting law. I'm wondering if the Concord Business Partnership would be the right forum for that type of thing, since it's not a town committee.
I don't know how you deal with it. I'm just, it's a, these are.
It is a valid concern.
Concerns. And, but I think in general, the thrust of the Economic Vitality Committee should be to promote and promote and facilitate. And so I think that that's where I'd like to see it going.
So, Henry, I'm confused. You are recommending that we add a member from, did you say the Planning Board or the zoning board?
Neither.
No.
No. Somebody who is on neither, but somebody who has familiarity, such as, like, you know, an attorney who does zoning, zoning work, or a planning professional who deals with regulation and zoning requirements, so they know what, knows how to deal with the regulations and the bylaws that get in the way of people, you know, advancing their business interests. Because, you know, the, it's part of our culture, our business. One of the things that distinguishes this community from many others is we do have a real business environment that's an important part of our culture. And we want to, we want to promote it for many reasons, because retail business, for instance, is suffering from all the challenges they face, you know, from the general environment, and because of the rising values of real estate, which makes it more expensive to do business, and also they're a source of tax revenue for the town. So these are good reasons for us to really be, you know, very supportive and aggressive about this.
Right. So it says, "Three citizens at large with relevant background such as business, urban planning, economic development." So would you suggest then that we also have one citizen at large with relevant background in zoning law, or, you know, what exactly are you suggesting?
Well, you know, Mary and I have talked about overdefining the.
Right.
The composition of committees.
Right.
And then what we do is we try to define what it is we want in the committee, and then we're tying our own hands.
Right, right. So what is your?
Maybe, maybe these are just things we want to take into account in making the appointments and really don't need to change the charge.
Or I could say.
Well, we could change.
Yeah. Probably going to say the same thing. Three citizens at large with relevant backgrounds such as business, urban planning, economic development, or zoning.
Zoning and regulatory, zoning and regulatory issues.
Isn't urban planning covered by that?
No.
Urban planning is like how you decorate the streets.
Okay. Are we making a change, or are we going ahead?
I think it's a good change.
Yeah, I'm fine with the change.
Change is good.
I just had a couple of comments. I thought the charge overall was good. I was questioning about whether or not four forums, public forums, were needed, and also only coming to the Select Board once. And I say that, you know, just look at where we are right now with so many meetings, we can hardly come up to breathe. So I think we could still, I would like to see at least one more visit with the Select Board in that charge. And that has to do with if, in fact, the policies and some other recommendations are going to come forward, we have it in a slightly more timely way to consider. But I do think four public forums is too many.
How many does the Housing Roundtable? How often does that happen?
Quarterly.
That happens quarterly. And I think economic development is just as robust as.
Yeah, but they've also had a terrible time coming up with.
Dates.
Dates.
Well, at first, it was easier. You know, I think maybe to start, we could start with quarterly, because there's a lot, I think there's a lot of work to do to bring these organizations together so that they understand what each one of them is doing. Actually, Mimi might have something to say. I see her poking her head out there.
I think there's some concurrent efforts. Like right now, the cultural districts and folks who are working in arts and culture are starting to convene together, and I think similarly, economic development folks are starting to convene together. In terms of number of meetings for economic vitality, we're sort of looking at how to partner more closely with the Planning Board, because a lot of the regulatory things that the Economic Vitality Committee would be advocating needs to go through them. So I feel like there's, we're looking at advancing more collaboration. So this maybe can be a work in progress as it gets defined a little bit more.
So I would suggest, so we don't have to amend this charge again, that it should say something like, "Host two to four forums per year." And that way, you can start with four if you want, and in another year, if you only need two, you can, we don't have to redo the whole charge.
I like.
Suggestion, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, good suggestion.
Okay.
And then coming to this.
And then what about the annual, the annual basis to report to the Select Board?
I do think more than once a year is, would be helpful.
Well, you know, the fact is, we have a lot of, we have this sentence in a lot of charges, and we never hear back from the committees.
We can take those.
That's the reality.
We can take those reports in writing.
To make it more would be kind of.
But that's an argument.
Is especially since, well, of course, this is maybe my own personal preference. I don't like the, you know, the informational meetings, the discussions, the status reports, if there isn't something for us to do as a result. So Mark suggested the report be in writing, or that it may be in writing.
It may be in writing, yeah.
And of course, it's available to the entire, and the liaison agrees it.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Ready?
Good. Okay. Move to approve the proposed Economic Vitality Committee charge as amended. I mean, I think we've got three amendments. One is to specify planning and regulatory in one of the citizens at large. The second one was.
I think it was zoning and regulation.
What did I say?
You said planning.
Zoning, you're right, zoning.
Zoning and regulation.
Zoning and regulatory. The second one was to change the number of quarterly forums to be two to four, so it wouldn't be quarterly, it would be two to four per year. And then on an annual basis, report, submit a written report, right? So move with those.
I think Report Two is fine, and it could be in writing.
Okay. So I'll leave it.
No, we don't need to amend this.
And then with those changes, do we vote to approve this charge?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much, Mimi.
We're making progress.
Well, we got to seven o'clock, that's for sure.
Well, yes. It was inevitable that seven o'clock would come, wasn't it?
Okay, we have to open the annual meeting. Move to reopen the Select Board Annual Town Meeting Public Hearing for Article 41.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And?
I think, Andrea, you, are you presenting Article 41?
Looks like Joe.
Or Joe.
It's going to be Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, she's in the car.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good evening, Joe Palumbo. I'm here with my colleague Andrea Fonsalada. We're the co-chairs of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, and we appreciate you moving this hearing to a meeting, and we could both be available. Thank you so very much. What we're here tonight is to, Shannon, could you go back to that very first slide? That's way at the beginning, that shows the things we're working on?
This is just what I have.
Oh, then that's fine. We'll do that one. All right, great. Thanks so much. So the purpose of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission throughout this year has been to focus on finding ways to make Concord a more inclusive and welcoming community. And we've had several areas of focus. Specifically, our two areas of focus this year have been how to elevate stories and welcoming around both our BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color in our community, and our LGBTQ plus IA community. Growing out of that has been an understanding in one of the six areas we're working in around climate and culture. And in the DEI Commission, when we talk about climate and culture, the climate part is And in the DEI Commission, when we talk about climate and culture, the climate part isn't, we're not talking about the environment, we're talking about the climate of how the town feels, how the town feels welcoming, who do we talk about, who do we recognize? And we know Concord is very specific in a place that loves its history. So, as we started looking at places where we can make an impact, one of the areas we started to look at is how do we retell and talk about the history of Concord in an inclusive way? And one of the strengths of our town is we have, for a longstanding, our history, Historic District Commission, Historic Commission, who really helps set the tone, as you saw with Ann talking earlier tonight, about the importance of the history we tell. So, this initial article was just put forward to start to get the, kind of jumpstart the conversation in the town about whose history are we talking about? How are we telling a history that's an inclusive, an inclusive history of the Black citizens of this town? An inclusive city of the, history of the women who made difference in this town, an inclusive history of the immigrants, and I can go on. So, out of that, we started some conversations because of this article with Historic District Commission and Historic Commission. We've met several times with both the Chair of the Historic Commission and Melissa, as well, in private, to try to like get this, jumpstart this conversation going. We've met with Dennis Fiore several times of the Historic District Commission. We've been in their, some in their meetings and some informally, to move this conversation ahead. But we thought it was important, before we go into detail, is to talk a little bit more about what we mean by inclusion, specifically what we mean by inclusion when we're thinking about in terms of history. So, Andrea, I believe, could you talk a little bit as our resident expert about, what do we mean when we're talking about inclusion in this context, or in, in general?
Sorry, I have to unmute her for our-
Yeah, she's coming. She's gonna unmute you.
I'm sorry, I'm-
That's all right.
I don't think I can unmute her at the moment.
You can take our slide, yeah, that's, we don't need that anymore. That helps.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. So, for everyone's reference, I would like to, to talk for a few minutes about what inclusion means. The words diversity and inclusion are often used interchangeably, and they're not, they don't mean the same thing, and they shouldn't be used in that way. Diversity refers to a person's background, be it race, ethnicity, age, religion, gender, sexual orientation, you know, it, it goes on. It varies greatly depending on which group you're referring to, if it's the people in this meeting. We can, you know, we can talk about what the diversity in this meeting looks like, or is it the select board? A specific commission, an organization, a company, or a town. And depending on the composition of whatever, you know, unit we're talking about, we would need different or, or specific inclusion mechanisms, because since the diversity varies so much, it's not the same to try to include, you know, like, single woman of a certain age than moms or older women. We need, you know, like, different types of, of, of things. So, this is where inclusion comes in. Inclusion means literally creating an environment where everyone, regardless of their background, again, race, ethnicity, age, everything, disability, feels empowered to fully engage and participate in that commission, in the town, in the organization, no, in the, in a school. What does this look like? To start, to start, it means to eradicate concerns about survival, no, belonging, discrimination, neglect, you know, if you have to be worried about that, you can't thrive. You cannot collaborate, you cannot participate, you cannot engage, you cannot impact in a positive way, you're just worried, no, and you're trying to survive. So, we wanna completely eradicate that, and then, provide the mechanisms, so that everybody has the same opportunity to maybe even, you know, create something better for Concord, since we're talking about, you know, our town. So, that's what inclusion means. How, what does that look like for commissions or for volunteers like ourselves, that are trying to design programs or projects for the town? It depends on who you are, like, what commission you're working with. And I, and we believe that's, you know, that's what each commission is gonna choose to do, but what we wanna do is share and maybe collaborate in any way possible, so that they have the tools to look at whatever they do with a lens of inclusion. So, it was important to me to, to give this information, so that we, you know, so that we're talking about the same thing, when we refer to, to the different interventions that, that we're proposing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, I'm sorry?
Do you have more to say on this show?
Not yet, almost there. That's fine. So, how this has turned into some of the work we've done with the two commissions, I don't, I know Dennis isn't here, we're working on sort of three areas, and these, oh, nice to see you, I'm sorry, what was your first name? Walter. What we're, we're working on is in three general areas, and these are just discussions we've been having with them. One, try to support the commissions in developing a statement around inclusion in their work, like, how does, what Andrea just talked about inclusion, what does that look like in Historic District Commission or the Historic Commission? Number two, to help begin, as Ann showed tonight, start looking at the policies, practices, protocols, administrative code, to look at the language in there, to make sure the language is, is more inclusive. And third, supporting them in their development of a wider network of people, more diversity, bringing more diversity and more diverse voices to staff, really, the HDC and HE. Those are the three areas we're working on. And we've just started that conversation. And before I go any further, Alan, did you want to make any comments, or did you want to make any comments about the initial work we were doing, as we talked about? No? Do you want to say anything? Okay. Okay. So, in the, in the bottom line, Andrea, that's, is there anything you want to add about sort of the work we're doing, and what's the impetus? But I think that's, that's where we're at right now. And we hope to keep making progress between now and town meeting, and getting some work done. But Andrea, is there anything you want to add? No? No, okay. What questions do you have for us?
Well, we do have representatives from the Historical Commission here, and I think what they're proposing to do is advise you on something, and the question is, do you have any response to this, this effort?
Well, I mean, I can just simply say that, I mean, we have been meeting with Joe and Andrea several times, actually, and what we have said to them, we, the Historical Commission, about a year, was actually about two years ago, we knew we were limited in the history that was being told about Concord. You know, first of all, the Historical Commission is responsible for protecting, identifying, and recommending to you about the historic artifacts, the actual items that have historic value to this town of Concord, the resources of the historic properties, the landscapes, the cultural monuments, the cemetery. But we also do tell the story through our history, and we knew from our, the last history that was written, associated with Historic Resources Master Plan, which is now 24 years ago old, a, a lot more has been done in the research and history of the town documenting that. We needed to put it in writing. So, we had successfully written a grant to the CPC, Concord Preserv, I mean, Community Preservation Committee, and the Mass Historical Commission, to obtain $50,000 to hire a firm, Heritage Strategies, which is out of Pennsylvania, they have worked all over the country, to help us redo our plan. A lot of what they have to do is required by Mass Historical, but the other thing is to tell the story about Concord. And we know there's a lot missing. We know that there are Indigenous people here in Concord, but it hasn't been documented. That's one of the things they'll work on. We know there were slaves here, we know there were freed Blacks here, we know there were immigrants here. So, we are working on documenting all of that, and that's something that this Elizabeth Watson, Peter Benton are helping us with. So, we are already underway, and this article would propose a task force that would start, I don't know, July or August? We're already working on that, and we're working with the DEI group, Andrea and, and Joe. So, I, I mean, I think the article, I can just, if it's okay, I can keep speaking, is redundant, because we're doing this. We know it has been missing, we're quite aware of it, but I, I also come back to the primary responsibility, the mess of the Historical Commission of Concord is legislated. We are obligated to care for the resources of this town. You know, and one of the resources now is the Robbins House. So, there will, there will be more properties associated with Blacks, and I hope, I hope we can find something for the, the Indigenous population, that we can also identify and include as part of the inventory of Concord.
So, Mary, go.
Thank you, Melissa. Do you know, when do you think this master plan will be done?
Well, Ann, I need some help on that. We are a little bit behind their timing because of town meeting, which takes up so much time. You know, they're in phases. We are still in the identification phase. The other thing they have to do is verify all the work that has been done before. So, all the natural, national register properties, all the homes, monuments, all that stuff has to be inventoried. So, Ann, maybe you can help me?
Maybe end of the year?
Okay, end of the year?
We got that identification phase in May, and then the survey phase probably by September, October.
And they're also, one of the other things that they will do, we will have public forums, we, because they very much want input from the community, that would be another opportunity. I think they're also gonna be working with Andrea, particularly on a, a survey that we would send out to the community.
Can I ask another question? So, what are the challenges that I've heard that you run into when you try to find out the story, that, of the voices that we haven't heard? Is that they're hard to find?
They are.
So, and they're hard to corroborate, once you find them, so-
That's history.
Right. So, how is your approach that you're doing with this new master plan going to overcome that impediment to, to bringing those voices into the story?
Well, among, certainly in the Indigenous pop, one, we're, you know, we are, we are working, we will be working with the Robbins House folks, I would suspect that they will be doing that, they have to interview them, they, we have given them a list of stakeholders in the community, that would include, like, Rob, all the properties, all the historic properties in town. The other thing, we have engaged the services, at least in the case of Native Americans, of the gentleman named Bruce Kerlis. Bruce is actually also working on the Warner's Pond Task Force. I think that is part, part of his professional background is in water resources. But he is the former Secretary of Indian Affairs for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We, he is our consultant on this, and also has been working with other communities to identify historians of Indigenous people. It is very hard, you know, Nancy knows, Nancy Nelson, who's former superintendent of Minuteman, the National Park Service works on this all the time, we are in contact with Simone Monteleone. It's hard, it is hard. But that's history.
And those are obli, obstacles you're gonna face, no matter how many committees or task forces we have. So, that's just, that's an Indigenous problem.
Well, it's an ongoing problem, that, you know, I, I know we don't want to talk about the signs, the Tersentenniary signs, but those signs are almost 100 years old, and in the intervening years, we have learned a lot about what happened on April 19th. So, that's what history is.
Okay.
It's constantly-
Thank you. Do we have any further questions or comments on this?
So, I guess, I guess we-
Alan?
We are working together with the Historical District Commission, and we are working with DEI, and also with the Historic Preservation Group that we, that we hired, you know, as the town. So, we feel that there is no longer a need for this task force call for an Article 41, and we are hoping that the DEI Commission will withdraw this article from the warrant.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments or questions?
You've got a hand up, Nancy.
I'm Walter Cly, I'm representative for the Historic District Commission this evening, representing Dennis Fiore. I think the Historical Commission, both across the board, including at the last Select Board meeting, presented the case very well. I think it's, at this point, another task force to accomplish, to come up with the, a result that can be reached through collaborative, cooperative work with DEI. As far as the HDC is concerned, is redundant, I think that's a good word for it. There is ongoing collaborative work already, whether it's because of the initial, let's say, the initial proposals from the DEI to sort of shock the community into confronting this or not. I think it's working, and we're working collaboratively, so, that's the HDC position.
Thank you, Walter. I think Nancy Frisella Lee is on, has her hand raised, and actually, she spoke, I think, at our last meeting, and-
Right.
Do you want to, do you want to further elaborate on that, Nancy?
Hi, I just have a question. One of the things that concerns me is that with this warrant proposal, they haven't, it hasn't been explained enough of how the task force would work. So, it's a general idea that they want, they're asking for a task force to be formed, but it hasn't been explained who would be on it, who would be, whether there would be people from these commissions, as well as people from DEI, and maybe outside people too, who are not in any of those categories. And there hasn't been any explanation of what exact issues they would be addressing, rather than, all of the conversation has been very generalized, and I think that's one of the problems that those of us who have had informal discussions about this is, is that there hasn't been a lot of substance, substantive things that have come up, they think that are not being done correctly. And as all the foremost people who have preceded me have said, have been addressing those things, and, and I, for one, really support the DEI Commission. I think they have done really wonderful work, and, and, you know, I'm grateful for that, but, and the town definitely needs that, but it just, to me, is too, the warrant article just is not specific enough, and so, at town meeting, I don't even know what we'd be talking about. There haven't been proposals about, for example, how many people would be on the task force, how long it would be. And as others have already said, we're, both commissions are already dealing with that, so it is redundant. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Now, we do not need, I mean, we don't need, this is not something we have to vote or decide on, this is just a hearing to have the article presented and to allow some comments on it. Does, does anybody have anything new to say?
Well, I'd like to hear Joe's response about, you know, the people are saying it's redundant, and what are the specifics? I'm wondering if Joe has a response about that.
Well, I think the, the most important thing is, I want to echo what Melissa was saying about the difficulty at telling an inclusive story of Concord, it's gonna take a lot of work. We know from the work of the Robbins House and the work that others have done, to tell the story of marginalized people takes a different kind of work, takes a different kind of focus, and a different kind of commitment. And Andrea and I's goal is to continue to help these commissions make, put in writing concrete steps, that when they're all on in the commission, and we're not here, and all that, and when these folks, these rumors change, when we go back to the documents, it says Concord cares about telling an inclusive history. So, we're gonna continue to work with them in whatever way we can to, to make that happen. If it's this task force, if we withdraw the task force and do it another way, if we continue these collaborations, all that's open for discussion. What we care about is will Concord take concrete steps to begin to tell the story in a way it's never done before? That's what we're trying to do. So, Andrea, you might want to add in something here?
Well, we had a hand, Nancy, do you still, Nancy Nelson, you want?
If Joe's finished.
I just want to make sure, Andrea, I want to give seats to my partner. Andrea, any comments here? Not yet?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I actually want to offer to withdraw the warrant article. I, we have been collaborating with both commissions, and they're both committed to including this perspective in, through either the preservation plan- perspective in, through either the preservation plan or other activities. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Nancy Nelson. Sorry. Oh, pardon.
This is all.
Nancy Nelson.
This is all for the record.
Yes. Okay, got it. A member of Concord's Historical Commission. The one thing I would like to say that I don't think has been said yet is while there has been communication among chairs of CHC and HDC, but if I'm not mistaken, there has been no discussion with the commission as a whole. So, I think this is premature. And not that it's not going to be necessary later. And what we saw from HDC is examples of what needed to be changed in our charges was the changes in pronouns. You know, we don't have chair men anymore, do we? And so, the pronoun changes are something that I think some of us have put to bed decades ago. So, I think DEI and CHC particularly need to, and we didn't take a vote on this, need to better understand what each of us do. And I think during the process of implementing the Historic Preservation Plan update, DEI will get to know us better, which they don't now, except for I know Joe. And we can understand each other's work and be better informed in the future to support something else if that seems necessary. Thank you.
Did I just hear correctly that Andrea offered to withdraw the article on behalf of the DEI Commission?
I thought so.
Okay. Then, okay. Then, I want to thank you for initiating this conversation. I think it's been an important conversation. I think you got our attention. I think that the work that's started now with this new master plan will hopefully address many of the things that you brought up. And I appreciate.
And we've got the two of you working together.
Three of us, actually. Three groups.
And we could not do anything.
That's right.
We could not do any better than that to have the two of you working together cooperatively. And also observing one of my pet principles of governing, and that is reduce, not increase the number of committees.
That's right.
Easier said than done.
In the end, everyone's heart is in the exact same place. We just have to figure out how to get there.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now, have I lost my place here?
This is, I think.
Legislative briefing.
MCI, no, MCI Concord.
Oh, MCI, that's right.
MCI, okay. MCI, and that's me.
That's you.
We've had a number of iterations of the amendment to the outside section of the governor's budget.
It's no longer an amendment. It's a rewrite of Section 107.
Well, that's an amendment, isn't it?
No, it's actually, an actual rewrite of the body of the legislation itself.
Has it been adopted yet?
No, but it's not proposed as an amendment.
Okay, we have new language.
I know. The language, the most recent thing that I got was the red line.
Correct.
The red line that's in our package.
Yes.
Which is, I'm not clear on how you're describing it. It is not a, it is not an amendment. It is a proposed amendment or it has been adopted?
It has not been adopted. It's a proposed rewrite of the entire section. Just keep going. It's, sorry, I'm sorry I brought it up.
Okay. So, and as far as, I mean, aside from the fact that this deals with the issue, I don't see how this, if that's what we're discussing, and I'm not sure we have any control or what goes to the legislature on this.
Can I, point of order.
No, 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 you don't need a point of order.
I do need a point of order because actually on the agenda, we're considering drafting a charge for the town advisory committee.
Okay.
We're not talking about the state legislation.
And in fact.
All right, good.
That makes things easier. It does make things easier, however, and what we're, but this, the proposed amendment
does reflect on this because it does mention a place in the legislation for a town advisory committee.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. And so.
Maybe we should back up half a step before that. So, our agenda said MCI Concord status report. And we've been getting our status reports generally from the deputy town manager on that. And I think we had agreed at the last meeting that we were going to try to make sure that we were communicating the status of MCI Concord to the public in a clear.
Yeah, that's right.
Way. So, and I've noticed those reports going out weekly, I think, and they've been informative. So, I'm wondering whether we should touch on the content of that report first for the public and then discuss the construction of our advisory committee. The deputy town manager's MCI Concord status report, which I think is also now incorporated in the town manager's report?
No, not this week.
Not this week?
No.
I can provide an update.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Sure. So, the, we have a webpage, I believe I mentioned this on March 4th, but there's a webpage dedicated to MCI Concord on the town of Concord website. It is under the How Do I heading, and it's to learn more about MCI Concord. So, we will be updating that frequently. We are working to put together some additional images that highlight existing conditions that, once they're ready, will be on that webpage. This week, staff has continued to research, exploring other state disposition projects, redevelopment of prisons in New England and beyond. We're learning about different economic development tools, talking to our networks, and generally learning about best practices in this space. The chair already mentioned that Representative Cataldo proposed a legislative amendment to the FY '25 budget. That language is included in that packet, and it was discussed at the last select board meeting on the 4th.
And can I ask a question about that? It's labeled in our packet, draft amendment to the governor's budget. So, is this amendment that we have in our packet, is that what's going to be submitted or there could still be more changes?
I believe this is a version that Representative discussed with the Ways and Means Chair last week.
So, we're getting pretty close, but we don't know for sure if this is final.
Right.
Okay.
One update is that the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, also known as DCAM, has identified a project manager to work on MCI Concord. His name is Paul Lennon-Hagen. The town manager met with him last week when he was in town. I met with him and Abigail Valdek, who's the Director of Public and Private Partnerships for DCAM today. This was an introductory meeting. And in the meeting, we discussed plans to set up a regular cadence of meetings. And I'd like to ask for the select board's advice in including one or two board members in those meetings and how you'd like to, you know, kind of decide how to incorporate the board in these conversations. The folks I met with today from DCAM are very interested to learn more about Concord. They're looking forward to learning about the charge of this local advisory group and figuring out how they can be in regular communication with both that group and the select board. When I asked where DCAM was with kind of phasing this project, they described it as Phase Zero. They said that the property is currently under the control of the Department of Correction, which we know. But they are prepping for Phase One, which is the site analysis work. And so, they're beginning to explore which, how to put together an RFP for various consultants to do the site work that, so we can understand the existing conditions.
Excellent.
And the Concord Public Works team attended a site visit last week to, or this, yes, it's last week now, it's only Monday.
It's Monday.
To visit the wastewater treatment facility to learn more about that system. So, that was part of their research. So, still in fact finding and exploring, building relationships at this point. And I will, I will add that I will include updates like this in our town manager's report. This one, some of the meetings happened today, so that will occur in the next town manager's report. Thank you.
So, Mary was quite right. The issue on the agenda was for us to talk about putting together a charge or some guidelines for the town's input.
That's right.
Into this process, which is, which has been specifically designated in the proposed amendment. So, and Mary has volunteered to draft such a document.
I have.
I would appreciate that offer. It's challenging.
It is. I would welcome input. If any of board members have any ideas about the work that the committee or the advisory board should do, any input into who would be good members, please forward that to Shannon. I really hope to get a draft to us by next Monday. So, if you would get that to Shannon quickly, that would help me incorporate it or not. So, I would appreciate.
Mary, are you saying by next Monday, you mean for us to discuss next Monday? That would be great.
Yeah, I'll have a draft. I intend to have a draft in front of us next Monday. The key word there is draft. So, it's a start for us to look at it. So, again, if you've got any ideas, please forward those to Shannon, and she can compile them and get them to me.
But Mary and I agree that it's important that we move to fill a potential vacuum promptly so that, because the fact, the opportunities for us to have a voice may very well have been affected by how early we come up with something and take the initiative.
Absolutely. In fact, that they're already doing an RFP. I mean, we really want to be in on Phase One, if not Phase Zero. And I have a question, Mary.
Yeah.
I want to spend a minute, if we can, getting ideas from the other board members. In our previous discussion, I made some notes about membership. And I guess there's kind of two ways to look at it. One is to have a very broad membership, to include all the different stakeholders, if we can. And the other way to look at it is, well, you don't want a committee that's so big that you can't operate. So, I want, I'm not really sure what I think, but for example, I heard us talking about someone from housing, someone from DPW or wastewater, economic development or Chamber of Commerce, transportation, planning, select board, VINCOM, historical, NRC. So, I guess, do we want to have a very broad committee that represents as many of these as we can? Or do we want to have a focused committee? Yeah.
I've been talking to a few people who have submitted cards or have been referenced to me by other people. And what I'm learning is, is that we have a lot of talent in Concord as far as people who know how to solve complex problems and know how to bring divergent groups together and help figure out what's the criteria we use moving forward? What are our priorities? So, they don't necessarily represent a category of the way we organize town meeting.
Right.
Or town governance. They're more, you know, big thinkers or problem solvers as far as, you know, complex things and how do we get a group of people together?
Right. That's great.
So, those are, to me, the must haves on the committee. And we've got a few, I mean, just so like, we're so fortunate, we have so many outstanding people. So, I think, for me, I think that's the starting point. And then, I don't know what other interest groups, to use, other interest groups we bring in so that we get all these bases covered. And the reason, I'll say a few more things. The reason is, is that there's a short-term effort and then there's a longer-term effort that we have. So, maybe the short-term is a different group of people than a longer-term, just an idea I'm thinking of. And the other epiphany I have, and I just want to share this with you because it was very revealing to me, is when I was talking with people, I realized this is an opportunity to get the younger generation of people in Concord interested in the future of Concord.
Yeah.
It really is because these are the people that are going to be living with whatever happens there. And we've got a lot of talent that are in, you know, the prime of their working lives that are eager to join. And that's what gets me excited about that. So, that was my epiphany. It's not us old people that I don't know if I'll be here when we see some of these, well, I probably will, but anyway.
What do you mean, old people?
Well, okay, I didn't mean you, Henry. But you see, that was, that was actually an epiphany that I just want to share.
Well, I think, I agree with you entirely that I think at this point, we want a committee that will be able to accomplish something rather than have merely being representative. Because being representative doesn't mean that you solve the problem.
Yes.
So, what we're really talking about is the need to bootstrap a process.
Yes.
So, what we should probably be doing in the early going is selecting a small group. I mean, we could even follow something like the 250th, some kind of overarching or strategically focused folks who can then come back and tell us what we need. In other words, we're not writing a charge for five years. We're writing a charge for five weeks. And then, another charge after that, potentially for some broader group. Because I think we need to take into consideration that we have town staff doing what they're doing, which is generating a lot of good baseline information. But we need to think about how we look at those opportunities. And I think we, probably the biggest constraint we're going to run into here is function, creating something that's not so small that two people can't talk to each other without violating open meeting law. So, we need to do something that's tight, but it has to have some flexibility. I think recognizing that, it's also important that this group be empowered to convene much broader set of input from some of the folks that may not need to or want to spend a whole lot of time on a committee or a group, but might have some very valuable input that can be, can assist us in planning what the next steps are going to be.
Well, if you have an effective advisory committee, they can call upon the resources that they need to do their job, right?
Right.
I guess the other thing we'd send out is if people have ideas, we welcome that as well, if people have ideas. But I like your idea, Mark, of maybe a shorter-term bootstrapping type.
Yeah.
We need to think about it.
And we could, we could reconstitute that group somehow, but maybe with some direct involvement. And we've already taken advantage of, and I think we're going to have to continue to take advantage of, the fact that this is essentially a land acquisition to occasionally meet as a board and meet with those strategic advisors to try and understand what we're going for in terms of priorities.
Okay. All right. We will look forward anxiously to your work product, Mary. And if anybody has any suggestions or thoughts, please pass them through.
Actually, I'd like to hear from Megan. Megan, what do you think about what we've said so far? Do you think that it's, we have, our approach is good? Or do you want to think about it and get back to us? I'm putting you on the spot.
No, I, yes, I think that sounds good. I'm thinking about, I'm also interested in seeing your draft charge. And I'd like to volunteer myself and my colleagues to help in any way, not overstepping, but, you know, thinking about how, you know, there could be, this body is so important to make sure that it's an inclusive term-of-the-night body, to make sure Concord voices are being heard. And yeah, I think you have your work cut out for you in thinking of how to narrow down, you know, the qualified folks that would be interested. So, I'm happy to help in any way.
I would point out that staff has already updated. I would point out that staff has already updated the volunteer card, electronic volunteer card to include the MCI Concord Advisory Committee as one of the options. And we've already begun receiving those things. So if there are people that are listening who want to be considered or have input in that, that is a good way to begin to, to indicate that interest and, and tell us how you might be able to help us with that.
Okay. Are we done?
Yeah, I would just comment that, you know, I'm, I'm reminded of Baki's comments to us about keeping in mind what the, the state has, you know, what, what the state is going to be interested in, in terms of the larger picture that whoever we bring in for our own committee is able to incorporate that into their thinking or at least come with that as a, a background in terms of being able to.
We have to understand the institutional limitations on what we can accomplish, but we don't want to over emphasize them because, you know, there are margins in which we can, we can move that, that would still make us effective.
So. Right. Clearly, we want the big picture for Concord, right? But if we have people at the table who don't have experience, the ability to absorb that there's a bigger picture in which we're thinking, I, I think they inform each other, is all I'm saying.
There's no, there's no harm in thinking big as long as you don't think too big.
Here's a question. I'm wondering whether we should be considering one form of organization to be, we actually hire somebody to represent us and, and develop a strategy. So we, we've, we've already been thinking, I can tell about this as a volunteer effort and something using our committee structure, but we might want to ask ourselves whether or not we need to do something a little bit more direct than that and whether that, that would offer us any, any advantages. For example, if you hire a lead strategist or a facilitator or somebody like that to develop a plan, then anybody, they can talk to anybody anytime in, in any format because they've been hired to do a job rather than, than, than being in a.
I would rather take advantage of the talent that we already have and see if, if those folks come up with the need to hire someone that we could consider at that time. But I don't think right now, I, I, I'm not, you know, ready to do that right now, I think.
I, I just think that this is a very big opportunity and we should consider a number of different ways of solving this challenge.
Yeah. So I kind of.
I think maybe we leave that as an option for this.
Okay.
Right. So I wanted to clarify with Mary. You are looking for ideas about the membership and the duties of the first group, the bootstrap kind of group or the long-term group or both?
Well, the bootstrap idea was, I just heard it tonight.
Right.
To make it fits in nicely with what I was thinking. So I guess both.
Both.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm just trying to get an idea of, I mean, all these charges have, you know, a background section, which, you know, we don't need to worry about right now. The membership section, we have to think through. The duties section, we have to think through. And then there's a section about open meeting law as boilerplate.
Right.
So we're really talking about who's on the committee and what are they going to do?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
And when, and what kind of timeframe, I guess, they're going to do it in?
Yes.
All right.
So we're open to ideas. I need them quickly.
And we're going to talk about it next week.
And we're going to talk about it next week.
All right. So that goes in our agenda next week. And so.
So if you're taking public comment, Diane Proctor has her hand raised.
On what?
Okay.
On what?
We have.
Diane has her hand raised.
Diane Proctor would like to make a comment.
On, on what?
On this.
What we were just talking about.
Well, we're not taking any action on this.
But we have a public, we have someone who would like to give public comment.
Okay. Diane?
You're muted, Diane.
There we go.
I was told I couldn't unmute myself. Now, now I may thank you so much, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Mark, I usually agree with most of what you say, but I think a five, a five week is a rather short period for, for a committee. But I deeply appreciate the discussion this evening. After the lead discussion on MCI, it was clear that the interest in our community is very broad. And so I hope that in creating, first of all, I hope we don't hire a consultant because then that requires getting them up to speed on so many aspects of our community. And so often, in my experience, consultants miss the whole point. They either give us a, a kind of a broad template that they've used for other communities, which, which are in many ways milquetoast, but it's, it's hard for consultants to get up to speed and really understand the complexity and depth of our community. Megan, thank you so much for your, your comment about inclusivity. And Mary, thank you for much, so much for taking this on. But I think it does require broad engagement. I, I know that we don't want it to unwieldy, a committee, but we have a lot of talent in this community, as Mary's already noticed. Nonetheless, I think that how, Mary, you define what our needs are going forward so that, so that the selection process that the select board enters into is clear and transparent for all the many interests that already exist in our community. So I think that as you formulate your plan, indicating how you will make the selection is almost as important as what the many talents are that you're, that you're looking for. So I thank you very much for the hard work and the, the good efforts that you're undertaking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
And, right. So are we ready to move on from this?
We are.
Okay, good. And what is coming?
Legislative briefing.
Huh?
Legislative briefing.
Legislative, yes. Chris.
Hello. My name's Chris Carmody. I'm the Risk and Compliance Manager for the Town of Concord. Thank you for making time tonight to review some legislative activity that's, that's happened over the past few months. I'm not going to report on any federal legislation, but I will say with the help of the Finance Department, we've been taking a closer look at the elective pay inflation reduction act, tax credits that the town may benefit from. So we're taking a closer look at that. In your packet, we included a legislative update memo and we also included a slide deck on the Municipal Empowerment Act. I think I'll start first with the home rule petitions. I, we've got six that are pending in the legislature right now. First is the real estate transfer fee. That is moving on two different tracks. It's one on the home rule petition that's been submitted to the legislature for their review, 2730. And then that, that ability has been subsumed by the Affordable Homes Act, which the governor filed earlier this, this fall. We've got a building permit fee for affordable housing. That's still in committee. They should report out in the next month. And that has not been included in the Affordable Homes Act. So that's a little bit of a wild card to see where the legislature is going with that one. The checkout bag fee was reported favorably from the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government and the House Clerk's Office is preparing the final committee report on that. The Rank Choice and Conquer Bill, H664, is, we're waiting for the Committee on Election Laws to issue their, their report on March 19th. The, the fossil fuel infrastructure, just like the real estate transfer fee, is also moving on two different tracks. One is the home rule petition that we submitted a year ago, H238. And the separate action is the Concord participation in the pilot fossil fuel free pilot program that the town was admitted to, I think in December, to participate. It was one of 10 towns with the Executive Office of Energy Resources. So we have received guidance from the Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy that our home rule petition may be moot. And we're just waiting to hear a little bit more guidance on them. But in the meantime, our participation in the pilot project is, is ongoing. And then lastly, that the, there was a bill filed by Representative Cataldo, H3242, on an earmark for the 250th funding for public safety for Concord and Lexington. That bill has been tabled while our representative explores other funding mechanisms. I'm just going to skip to the fiscal year 2025 budget bill, which has been, Representative Cataldo has proposed making an amendment to that in a few different ways. One is the, he's considering a funding request for the 250th. And then, as discussed earlier today, there's an ongoing discussion about the governance structure for the disposition of the MCI prison. Maybe we can switch over to the Municipal Empowerment Act. And do you want to come up or you, you good there? So Mimi and I presented the Municipal Empowerment Act summary to the Economic Fatality Committee a few weeks ago. It's in your deck. It's a large, large bill. It's filed in January 29th, 2024. It was in panel as S2571. And it's got a lot of really incredible powers for municipalities. Part of it is to get away from all of the home rule petitions that are filed at the legislature to, and to modernize some of the municipal power that they, that have, that have been allowed under state law. So I don't know if there's any, anything you want to touch on.
There are a couple of things that they're extending the, some of the COVID protocols that made it a little easier for hybrid meetings or towns to be able to choose on how they were going to run public meetings. One was around outdoor dining, so not duplicating, having to have the liquor license extended to the ABCC if it was outdoor dining, if it was already approved locally, that that would be okay. There were a couple new taxes allowed. So one would allow for the increase on the local meals tax and on the lodging tax. So it's not required, but it does give municipalities the option to increase those.
So I had a question about that. The, the last two pages of the presentation talk about authorization for additional local receipts and has the local lodging and local receipts tax. And it talks about a, a number increasing, but it was unclear to me, is that a Concord specific number? Is that some statewide number? What would that actually?
So it was the one that shows like for local receipts for lodging?
Yeah, it has some years and then it ends with, well, for example, the lodging tax starts out around almost 900,000 and ends up near 700. And then it just has the comment $99,614 increase, but I couldn't tell.
But that's basically if you were to, 1% of 2023's money, assuming that if we had the same amount of revenue, of gross revenue for lodging, if instead of the existing tax, there was this increase, the new tax, that's what the differential was.
Okay. I see.
Similar for the local meals tax. If it was increased to the, the new max allowance by the state, it would generate additional tax revenues to the town by 62,000. So it's not a, a major source of revenue, but just indicating the scale of what it would represent.
Right. Okay. I see now.
But if it's local option, it means that it does change the competitive environment between adjacent municipalities.
I'm not sure if it makes a significant difference for, you know, customers dining out at a restaurant, whether they're noticing whether their meals tax is 6% or 7%. I don't know if, I don't think it makes a difference for the competitiveness of the individual businesses.
As a follow on the excise tax, right? I had a hard time understanding how this would work. So it's a 5% surcharge on the vehicle's value. So that means you take the vehicle's value and then you add, you increase it by 5% and that surcharge is then taxed. I'm trying to quantify how much money this is, is available to us if we were to enact this.
Yeah, thank you. So we, we are still working on those numbers.
Yep.
Right now, it's $25 per thousand assessed for motor vehicle excise tax in Concord.
Yes.
And that would change to whatever it is, 5%. So my, my rough calculations would be it would double the revenue to the town, but I, I still need to look at those and I haven't reviewed that with the Finance Department yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so $25 per thousand is 2.5%.
It's still a lot. I think to look at the numbers that you said would be available to Concord, I think that would be more than we're seeing from lodging. But I, I haven't, I haven't run the numbers either.
Absolutely, it would, yeah.
But I, I would ask you that, you know, I zeroed right in on the revenue opportunities when I looked at your presentation. So I would ask you to remind the select board when the warrant opens or when the, in the fall, when we're, to remind us that this would be our opportu, because I'm assuming this requires town meeting approval, right?
That's right. So it's got to be signed into law. That may happen in July or August this year.
And if it is, then we have an opportunity to bring this to FY20, or 25's town meeting. So I would just ask you to remind us of that and so, you know, trigger us so that if we have to, in fact, you know, write an article that we're ready. Thank you.
Right. So about that motor vehicle, that's a big change, doubling it. Is there an option to go in the middle or you have to either keep it as it is or double it?
Ah, that's a great question. We, we did hear a good amount of pushback on that particular article or that particular provision at the state public hearing. And I think my understanding is that it's, it's a, it's a local option, A or B. So I don't think you can adjust, I don't think you can adjust the amount, but we'll, we can take a closer look at that.
Okay.
I also have a question about the fossil free fuel. Did I say that right? Fossil fuel free? Fossil, sorry. I'm a little bit concerned. The, my bottom line question is, what's the date that the town can start requiring builders who are either building new or substantial additions to be fossil fuel free? Fossil, when? What's the date? Do you know when the?
Do you have the, because there was something about it was six months after.
Yeah, do we?
Yes. For, so for the last, so there's an amendment on, on, for this town meeting.
Right.
But the last year one, that was, I think, January of 2023 for the bylaw for the fossil free fuel.
I've got you doing it, sorry.
I call it the top 10 pilot program. That one requires two things. It requires Attorney General approval and it's six months after, I think, the department issued something. I'm not exactly sure about that. But I know that the six month piece is up in June and we're still waiting on Attorney, the Attorney General. So that's for the last version.
Okay.
So for the new version, once that one's approved, if it is, that will.
Town meeting.
That will, yeah, that will also require Attorney General approval.
I thought it was part of a pilot, though, that, that.
Yes.
And that's not been approved, but.
It has. It's a, this is a little complicated because the state has been rolling out this pilot program, which requires local bylaws. And it's been happening at the same time. So the reason it keeps coming to town meeting is because the, the program's evolving a little bit as they're learning more and saying, actually, this language is preferred or this language.
Okay.
So it's, it's cutting edge, you know, it's all happening at the same time at this point. But we'll be sure to notify you as soon as we hear back from the Attorney General.
That would be great.
So let's say the Attorney General signs it on a specific date. Does that mean the next day, the builders have to follow it or, or what?
This, this one's also being held up by June is the, I think it's June 22nd. I can pull up the exact thing.
Well, that's not my question.
Yeah, June or the Attorney General's signature, whichever's later.
Oh, whichever's later. Okay.
Yeah, it has to meet both and I, and I just don't have.
Okay, that's good enough, Megan. Don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
So one could be forgiven for thinking this is already in effect.
It was. I heard March 21st. So I thought it was.
It was too hard to pronounce.
This is the enhanced stretch code that is also
Oh, that's right.
Oh, and I did pull it up, I'm sorry. So so the January 2023 bylaw amendment needs two things. It needs Attorney General approval, which I mentioned, and it needs to be six months after the DOER approval. And so the DOER approved the pilot program in December.
Okay.
Of '23.
Right.
Yes. So six months into that gets us to June, but you need both pieces.
Okay.
And so we we don't have the Attorney General one yet. So the new bylaw for the spring town meeting needs both the Attorney General approval and it's supposed to be 90 days after the DOER approves it. So the DOER approved it in December, and so then we're looking at March. But town meeting will be in April.
Yes.
So I should do a time I'll do a timeline.
You'll let us know.
That's okay. Don't waste your time.
So the real answer is, we don't know. But the another complicating factor is that
You should let us know.
Usually, a bylaw that gets passed, when it is ultimately approved by the Attorney General, its effective date relates back to the date it was originally adopted by the town meeting. Now, how you would do that with something that involves construction that took place six months earlier.
It's a little risky.
Yeah, right.
So we're looking to make sure everything is.
But so we can still say we don't know.
But we will know.
After it happens, and then maybe.
Good.
Okay, so what are we going to move on to now?
Just lastly, so
What are you going on? Yes.
No, just one more. I am in touch, you know, on a weekly basis with our federal and state legislators. So if you do have questions about federal programs or about any of these home rule petitions or anything, please let me know, and I'm happy to draft any correspondence for you or or follow up on your questions.
Well, one of those things that I thought you mentioned to me in passing about the municipal empowerment is it would streamline the process for us doing licensing, like the one-day licenses and all those things that we spend time on, which are routine administrative tasks, but still have to be on our legis on our on our agenda. Is there any hope that those are dealt with?
Yeah, I think that is contemplated in the Municipal Empowerment Act, and it sounds like there was some support for that at the public hearing on Beacon Hill. But I'll I can follow up with Representative Cataldo and see where they
I mean, you know, I think that we really don't have a lot of significant input on most of those licensing issues that by statute we have to spend time on. And they could be they could easily be administrative. So anyway, that but it is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, did I ask what was next?
Yes.
And what is next?
Discuss recommendations on annual town meeting warrant articles.
Oh, okay. Really?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we have made recommendations on most are we talking about all of them or just ours?
The ones we haven't touched on yet that we've heard from in hearings since the last meeting.
We make recommendations on all the articles.
Right.
Right.
We only have tonight and next Monday. That's it.
So I think we would start with number seven, the fiscal
What about number three? I don't think we did number three. At least it's not on the schedule that we have in our packet.
Yeah, we should do number three.
Okay.
Pretty much.
That's right, because we hadn't seen that.
All right, I move we take affirmative action on Article Three, meeting procedure.
What did I miss? My papers here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Carrie's unanimously.
Carrie's unanimously. You got that, Shannon?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, now we're on number seven. Go ahead.
Number seven, we need to wait.
You're right.
Because we may have to take some action, but we don't know yet.
Yeah, that's
That's right.
So that should be reported town meeting, I think.
That was not present presented, right? Because they don't have it yet.
I'm not expecting to have to move that.
Well
Anthony's here. Article number seven, which is the budget line item adjustments, are you expecting to move that this year?
Yeah, I think we're going to
Oh, you are?
Take the $515,000 that we from last fiscal year and make the adjustments here.
Okay, okay. So you're right, Carrie.
I move that we write report a town meeting in in our, you know, we have to write down for each one, right? So I move that it says report a town meeting for this one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number eight, the town's 2025 budget. The Finance Committee recommends affirmative action, and they're at guideline.
Okay, I move we take affirmative action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Passes unanimously. Number nine.
Okay.
Town's capital improvement and debt plan?
Yep. I wish we had more for roads in there, but we don't. I think Carrie did a great job of presenting this at the Finance Committee hearing.
I do, too. She was very proactive.
Number nine.
I thought she was very proactive about talking about the roads, and I'm really hoping that next year we have a really good plan. I think people are waking up. This has been going on for 10 or 20 years now.
Yes.
And we need to catch up, and people are coming together on this and talking about it. So I thought Carrie did a good job of that.
And we did note that there's she said an expectation that there'll be a tier-three capital article, probably for excluded debt, I would assume, for roads.
A year from now, right.
Next year.
Right.
Okay.
We'll have to talk about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but for now?
For now. I recommend that we recommend affirmative. I move that we recommend affirmative action on Article Nine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. It's unanimous. OPEP trust fund?
Move that we recommend affirmative action on Article 10, the OPEP trust fund appropriation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. Number 11?
Move affirmative action on Article 11?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 12, appropriation for the OPEP prevention programs fund.
Move affirmative action?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, very good. Okay, on the public safety, that hasn't been heard yet.
Right.
By the FinCom. Okay. 14, use of free cash. I think FinCom is waiting to find out what the certified balance is before they finalize an amount for this article.
Right, that's right.
Is that right? Okay, so this needs to wait at least until next week.
Okay.
Do we know what number for free cash was built into the budget?
A million.
A million?
A million.
Thank you.
When they set the guideline, you mean?
Yeah, well, the budget that we just recommended affirmative action on several articles ago.
No, that was the town budget.
The town budget.
Right, but
Built on the use of a certain amount of free cash.
No, because free cash is for the overall thing. You've got the schools, you've got the capital, you've got. Anyway, there's a lot of questions on the free cash because of the change in the accounting system and a couple of other factors. So we're waiting to hear.
I understand the balance hasn't been certified yet.
Right.
I was just asking the question of what number was expected
It wasn't. It wasn't. It wasn't, because typically when the FinCom sets the guideline, and when they set the guideline, they determine what they expect the increase will be. That exercise, they didn't go through this year.
Okay.
So it actually wasn't
Okay, so we'll come back to this one.
Yeah.
It wasn't.
All right.
All right.
Okay, the next number 15, we haven't that hasn't been heard, has it?
No, that's tomorrow night.
16 is tomorrow night, 17 is tomorrow night.
I think that we only have two tomorrow tomorrow night, right?
No, they added some more.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we can go down to 19, which is
Wait a minute, what happened to 17? Is that tomorrow night?
That's tomorrow night as well.
Okay. 18, we did.
19.
19, they're hearing tomorrow night.
20, the school budget?
They did hear that one.
But they haven't the school committee hasn't finalized that budget. They're still trying to meet the guideline. So I think that might go to town meeting.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, so let's wait with that.
The amenities building has what's happening with that? Has that been withdrawn?
I thought we understood that was going to be not moved.
Yes, I think so.
So
We can skip that.
Meghan or Anthony, is that correct? That 21, the amenities building is not going to be moved?
That's right.
So we don't have to take any position on that one?
That's right. Okay, Article 22.
We already
So in this one, we we had our discussion
Mm-hmm.
Last time, and we asked for an opinion by town council, which we received in writing.
All right.
And we wanted to see
And we wanted to see the motion
The motion.
Which was also distributed via email over the week. If you didn't see it, then
I didn't. Do I need a reading?
Yes. If that's okay.
Yes, no problem. Based on all the clarified information, we submitted a draft motion to the town moderator, and the draft motion reads that Mr. Palumbo and Ms. Fonseca moved that the town asks the school committee to name the publicly financed and owned property currently being built at 923 Old Melbourne Road as Ellen Garrison Middle School. And town man town moderator responded that our motion was in
Scope.
Scope.
Line.
It was, okay.
So the motion now is that the town meeting requests the school committee essentially to change its decision.
Yes. No, it asks the school committee to name the publicly financed and owned property as such as Ellen Garrison Middle School.
That would be changing the decision they already made.
Yes. Where does asking the town to?
Is the word urge or request or?
It's request, I think he said.
Asks, okay.
Ask.
Great, okay, thank you.
So the I have a request related to this. I would like us to make the written opinion of town council that we received on the issue of of whether or not this APP 43 applies and whether and and the related questions that we asked town council around naming the school be released. It wasn't included in the packet. It concluded essentially that APP did not apply and that the select board actually doesn't have a role in naming school property, but I think that it would be useful and informative to the public to understand that.
I wanted the board to decide that.
Yeah, and so I'm asking that we decide that.
I think it is public, isn't it?
No, it isn't.
I thought it was, too.
I thought Carrie sent it.
What what town council said is that it was it was it was confidential as attorney-client, but that he drafted it in such a way that if the board cared to release it, it would not there would be no problem, no privileged problem. So
I'd say Carrie.
Hmm?
I'd like to hear from Carrie.
And and I I did, at the end of last week, release that to the chair of the school committee.
You did. She did. So it's public.
Yes.
It is public.
So I'm I'm asking that we maybe add it to the to the minutes of this meeting, for example, so that, you know, anybody, including the DEI commission, and, you know, and I'm going to assume that if we make if we agree to this, then, you know, those people that request it could receive a copy and read it for themselves.
A more practical, I think, resolution, since the minutes usually are a week or more out of date, we could put it in the meeting package for next week, and then it will be public a week from now.
Yeah.
And if anybody asks for it, it can be
Can be distributed.
Find it, okay?
Okay.
Does that require a motion?
No.
I don't think so.
I think we can just agree.
We'll just do it, okay.
Okay, but what about this? What about our recommendation on this motion?
So at this at this point, given that information, then then I think it is appropriate for us to decide whether or not we want to make a recommendation on this particular article.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so
You're aware our motion is in alignment with that information?
Right.
Yes, it is.
And that was the reason that I was bringing that up is that
Very good.
It essentially asks the school committee to change the name of the school, recognizing that that we, as the select board, are, you know, five more opinions, one way or the other
That's right.
About that name. And I think that up until now, if one thought that APP 43 applied, then this issue of what the name of the building could be was something that could potentially have been come before our board, and then we would have to decide at that point. But I think that acting on the opinion of council, we can recognize that it's not going to formally come before our board, and so we should make our recommendation accordingly.
I think if the town meeting was to make such a recommendation, I think that we should leave it to them to make.
We are leaving it to them because we have a motion in front of town meeting. What this is asking us is, as select board members and as people who have a broader view of the town, how would we recommend that individuals vote? That's what this is asking us. It's already in front of the town. That's not the decision. The decision is, what do we think as individuals?
Right.
Who have a broader purview of the town? And I would vote, I would recommend affirmative action.
I agree. I think the select board has to take a position on every single article, so we have to decide something. And I would agree with Mary that we should approve affirmative action with the new language that Joe has just told us that aligns with town council's opinion.
I'll make a motion to that effect, that we recommend affirmative action on Article 22.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I say that because the the town council, both to the school committee and to our own our own town council and school committee, council have already determined that this is a matter which is in the exclusive jurisdiction of the school committee, and they have made that decision that that it's not it's not even appropriate for this to be in front of the town meeting. It's truly advisory, and I think that if as long as it's on the town meeting warrant, it will if the proponents want to make a motion, they certainly can do so, and the town meeting can make that decision.
That's right.
That's right. And it's just advisory.[1676.41] And it's just advisory, that's right.
It is advisory.
That's right.
But it, it will enjoy a conversation within, on the floor of town meeting, and so we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, no.
Vote is four, one. Okay, Concord Public School operating budget. It has affirmative action from the finance committee, and it is within guideline.
Recommend affirmative action on the Concord Public School operating budget. Article twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Concord Public School capital budget. Actually, the. Finance committee has not voted, so we should.
Quite wrapped up on that one yet, I don't think.
They haven't wrapped up on that?
Think so.
Okay.
Somebody could correct me if I'm wrong.
Actually, in our packet, it says.
It says no vote taken at this time.
Yeah, this was after the Zoom bomb, so we don't know what happened.
Got it. Okay, good, so.
So they didn't take a position on this one?
Right.
Yeah.
What about twenty-five? Does anybody know? I, I heard that they withdrew this, but Anthony did.
That's correct, they did withdraw that.
Okay, thank you. So, no, we don't have to recommend one way or the other. Town meeting study, we already did that. Citizens petition, we already did that.
Okay, wait a minute.
Oops, sorry.
Back to Article twenty-six, town meeting study committee.
Yep.
We did vote last time.
Yes.
But we did receive some really good comments, I thought, from Sue Felshen about this.
Yes.
She had some good ideas of the membership of this committee that I thought were really excellent ideas, and I'm wondering if the moderator would consider she adding her suggestions or?
Well, I think that's up to her to determine if she wants to make an amendment.
Right.
Not us?
Right, but I don't know if, Carmen, if you've had a chance to think about it or even seen that yet or?
Good evening, Carmen Reese, town moderator. I, I did see Sue Felshen's thoughtful comments, and in particular, she was looking for an individual with expertise in organizational decision-making and psychology, who could opine on the value of deliberation in, or at least bring that viewpoint to the committee, the value of deliberation in making decisions. I, I will tell you that I have been mulling that and thinking about where I would find such a person. And I, I, I feel that it is something that I would certainly bear in mind as I speak with the various candidates of the, for, for the committee. I think I'm more likely to find people who have personal backgrounds in having made decisions within organizations so that they will understand or, and experience with the town meeting process, so that they will understand what deliberation is and how deliberation changes the way decisions are, are made. And forgive me for rambling, but I, I think, I, I almost feel like I, I, I appreciate that this could be a subject for expertise, but I almost feel like it's more of a subject in the same way that serving on a jury is, that it's more of a subject of common knowledge and common experience of the world, and that we'll have it on the committee without specifying it. So I will think about it some more, but at the moment, I'm, I'm disinclined to change the, the qualifications that are, that are listed in the proposed charge. There was a second comment that Ms. Felshen had, and that was that she thought that it was important that we have someone who had some expertise in security on remote connections and so forth. I view that as being encompassed in having someone who has expertise in electronic communication. Security is part of that, so I, that is certainly an issue that I think is important, and I would be looking for that in, in that.
I think the issues really are not a matter of scientific accuracy, because it's even hard to know exactly what it is you're trying to find out when people vote. And so a lot of it is the environment in which people are deliberating, as we call it, and, and accuracy, you know, may not really correctly reflect the will of the people, because part of it involves who shows up and who takes the trouble to show up, and how much time they spend on finding out what the issues are, and all those other things that. What I frequently find is that the worst way to find out what people really want is to ask them. As to you, what you want to do is find out what choices they actually make.
Yes. I, I don't think that, that Sue Felshen was talking about accuracy in voting or decision-making. I think she was talking about the security of a remote connection to ensure that the person who's participating is the registered voter you think is participating. I think that's what she was talking about, so. And also, given our recent experience with Zoom bombing, that's one of the other, that's one of the other aspects to.
Well, that is, that is, you know, something that we have encountered in our meetings, that when we rely on the remote access, if the remote access is not functioning, we are paralyzed. It would be, and.
Another issue.
So there is no way to continue the meeting if it is noticed as being virtual, and the internet link fails, you just go home.
Which would be problematic if it were a town meeting we were talking about.
Thank you.
Is Sue here at all? Can you tell?
Okay, we can go on. We've already taken a position on, on that.
Okay.
So twenty-eight, citizen petition, remote participation.
We decided to table this?
We did.
I would, I would suggest that we take a, no action on this one.
Oh, this is the one that I was supposed to find out the motion, and I did, and Shannon sent it out to everyone.
Do you need me to pull it up?
Please.
That'd be great.
Or at least another way to look at it is that's a subject that is, will be considered by the moderators committee, which is true of actually all of these suggested amendments to the town meeting procedure. We have a committee to study them, let's let them study them before we make a decision.
Okay, so the petitioners, everybody was confused last week. We didn't know what their motion.
Oh, so it is a home rule petition?
It is a home rule petition.
Right.
Oh.
To petition the mass general court to allow remote participation. So actually, it's not just a matter of studying it, but we need permission from the state to be allowed to do this.
And as a matter of procedure, if they were to grant that home rule petition, which we know takes a long time, it would still have to come back to town meeting to be implemented. Is that, we'd have to vote on it again at town meeting, is that correct?
Usually it's correct.
Is that correct, Carmen?
It, it would depend on what the state legislation said. Typically, home rule petitions are not self-executing, they usually have to come back one more time for town meeting to embrace what the state has given you an option to do.
Right, okay.
So I, I think that what, I, I'm, I'm sorry that I don't have it in front of me, but the, the language for the proposed home rule petition is, is in the warrant, it's printed in the warrant, what, what, what the petitioner is, is proposing. And it would simply be legislation that would authorize the town to institute remote voting if it wanted to. But the town would then have to go on to take the step of figuring out what that technology would be and what the, what the terms would be, and actually voting to institute remote technology. Right now, we can't do it because we don't have the authority to do it under state law.
Right.
So this article is looking for us to ask the legislature to give us the authority to do it if we want to.
If we want to, okay, so then.
So I'm in favor of this for two reasons. First of all, it says to allow remote participation. So if we don't want to do it, we don't have to, there's no requirement. And secondly, if town meeting votes for this, it gives that suggestion to the task force that's going to study town meeting, and now they can come back with some options on, you know, how to do it in a secure way and, and everything. And, and it, since it's going to take a few years anyway to get through the legislature, it would be good to get a sense from town meeting on, it would be good to debate this and get a sense, and give that sense to the task force.
I agree.
Also, I'm, I'm reading authorize the select board to petition to mean when we think it's, we're ready, we could do that, not go ahead and do that petition. It's not requiring us to petition.
But it's not telling us when either.
But it doesn't matter anyway, because the petition is to allow the town.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if we're authorized to make a petition, that's not exactly the same as being urged or required or asked to make the petition. We just, we could, for example, what I'm thinking is I, I very much want to hear what the town meeting study task force does if we're already authorized to do that, and that's one of their recommendations, then I'm inclined to, to do it. If it's not one of their recommendations or they think it's infeasible, then maybe I wouldn't bother the great general court with my petition.
Okay.
I think it's a good thing to not be able to do. I know that sounds, I mean, it sounds like a good thing to be able to do anything that you might ever want to do, but sometimes there are things that it's just probably not a good idea to give you yourself the opportunity to follow through on, so.
That would be your recommendation?
It would.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to recommend affirmative action on Article twenty-eight, remote participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, I'll go no on that.
Linda?
Abstain on this one?
Okay. So three yes, one no, one abstention.
So it's, you still have three in favor?
Still, still, still recommends affirmative action.
It does. Okay, twenty-nine.
Do we have a motion for this one?
Good question. I don't know.
I don't know either.
This is, this is the one that I was concerned about, the fact that it could be read to require that we use these things, no matter what the meeting or how to reveal. So vote to utilize clickers doesn't say when we want to, or when it makes more sense to do it, it just says vote to utilize.
So we need to see the motion?
Wait a second.
Would that help?
Yes.
Did we do a motion on, did we get a motion on this one, Shannon? Do you know?
I didn't receive anything.
Okay, what is the other one that we got the motion on?
The other one that you got more information on was Article thirty-one.
That's right.
Right.
That's right. Okay, so this one, we haven't seen the motion. Can we get the motion and talk about it next week?
Sure.
Great. Number thirty, we've already voted on, that's easy. Number thirty-one, the town goals, we got, as Shannon just said, we got a lot of great information back from the Climate Action Committee.
Right.
For me, it raised more questions, but that was good. I, I got enough information that I, I would recommend affirmative action.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we recommend affirmative action. We've already did thirty-two, solar, we haven't heard, solar hasn't gone to the FinCom yet. Okay, the four planning board articles, as I said earlier in my liaison report, a pretty good reception at the hearing.
Okay, I move affirmative action on number thirty-four, MBTA multifamily overlay district.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, good. Thirty-five?
Move affirmative action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number thirty-six, Terry, you're on a roll, go ahead.
Okay, affirmative action, I move for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, okay, thirty-seven?
Move affirmative action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Okay.
Oh, thirty-eight, oh, gosh.
Okay, this one, I think you had asked for some positions on this from staff.
I asked Jason, yes.
Yeah. I'm still of a mind that we need to send a, a signal to companies that might be interested in building cell phone towers that they're, that they're welcoming Concord. So my opinion is that we should recommend affirmative action on both these articles as a way of showing that we are interested in having these facilities built. This town has established itself as a town where it's difficult to get these things, if not impossible, and I think we need to do something to change that.
Okay, I think what I heard him say is that by putting out an RFP for these two locations would imperil the existing negotiations.
Those existing negotiations seem to be dragging on for a considerable.
They are this.
For a long time.
Well, I, we could talk about this later, but.
But, but that's what.
Very close on those.
But we said that six months ago.
Well, I know, but things change and things get closer.
The, the other thing is that a single, a single facility by a single provider doesn't solve the problem of communications in Concord.
That's true.
But the, I see the problem here is that I have no problem with recommending something in terms of getting additional cell towers approved, but I, I, I don't know what the relative merits of the specific locations that are being proposed here. And I would not necessarily make a choice as to, I mean, I would think we should do something to encourage improving the service, but I don't know whether seventy, fifty-five Walden Street or the Kaiser Road.
So the landfill site had a tower at one point, and the Kaiser Road site was a site that was in development and encountered significant community opposition and ended up falling by the wayside because of that. So both of these are sites that have been of interest to providers in the past. Stands to reason, they'd likely be interesting to providers in the future if they thought they were available.
What about the fact that the landfill is like a thousand feet away from where it would be used, and there would be a dead spot on Route Two? Is, is the landfill the best site? I hear what you're saying about the public works or Kaiser Road, but I'm wondering about the landfill.
The, the tech, the, the frequency propagation studies that were presented by the proponent here are older and probably not reflective of today's 5G technology anyway. That was in Jason's note to us, and probably would need to be redone, so I would not weigh in one way or the other on whether those are really reflective of what the actual experience are. I'm really talking about our relationship with wireless communications providers as a community that, where someone can make an application and expect to get something built. And if we decide that we're not even interested in issuing an RFP for sites that we've considered in the past, I, I think it sends the wrong message to, to those folks who might be able to actually work on this problem.
So.
Can we wait till next week?
I would like to wait, yeah, this is a very complicated issue.
There's, there may be subsequent developments even before next week.
That would be good, that would be great, okay.
Would it be worth hearing from the people negotiating at Tricon? What, what is their position?
No.
On these two articles? Do they feel like it's going to discourage their negotiations or, you know?
It would not be productive to discuss that in public.
No, I know.
I, I don't.
I understand that, I just.
I mean.
It's a very complicated issue.
I'm optimistic, but also.
Okay. Number forty, CPC presented to FinCom? No.
No.
Okay. Number forty-one's been withdrawn, forty-two, we already, oh no, forty-two.
Forty-two we need to do.
What did, we tabled that, does anybody remember why?
No, I was trying to remember why we tabled that.
Okay, so.
We had a couple of questions that were answered.
They were answered, yeah.
Are you okay, Linda?
Yeah.
Okay, good, so vote affirmative action, to recommend affirmative action on Article forty-two?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the rest, we haven't heard yet. Right?
Correct.
Very good.
The enterprise fund hearing is coming up.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Well, I have a question on 52 and 53.
Okay.
Are we...do we know yet whether we're going to move those?
I think we're moving 52, but we have not yet made a presentation. 52 is unpaid bills.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need...and what about 53?
No, no motion anticipated.
Okay, so we need to wait on 52 and no motion on 53, thank you. Okay?
Very good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.